I think it's not my fault.
Okay. I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting for the evening of November 13th. I would like to amend the agenda and present the first quarter budget update. First, if everybody's agreeable, can I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Sorteck reminds me or tells me that we're supposed to tell you all that you're being filmed. It will not be on Broadway. Run?
Maybe.
Just sit. Why don't you take this? No, why don't you sit right there? Thank you.
Full house. Good evening. The first quarter results are in. It's through the end of September. Expenses are three hundred, around roughly $310,000 less than for the same period last year. And this is due to different reasons, but mostly because of forward purchase agreements or encumbrances, which are close to $600,000 less at this stage of the year than they were last year. I just want a caveat to explain a little about encumbrances. There is a timing issue always with encumbrances. It very much depends on when they are created in the course of the year. For instance, this year, the tuition line in the special education budget shows around $623,000 less in forward commitments than at the same period last year. But this was as of September 30th. If you look at it today, it will show forward purchase agreements of about $575,000. So these things are timing. They're not reflective of reduced spending or in any way savings. This is just a timing when we talk about purchase agreements. As far as budget is concerned, 25%, so exactly a quarter of the budget is expended to this or committed at this point of the year compared to 28% last year. On the payroll side, expenses have increased by $197,000. This is in line with projections and what we expect at this stage because, as you know, there are contractual agreements which carry forward a budget and they increase every year in line with the tables and all the obligations that we have agreed on. So I wanted to focus on the school budget this year on the contractors line item and the repair and maintenance of the heating systems. This year, we have seen a cost of close to $168,000 for repair and maintenance of all the HVAC systems in the high school and the elementary school. And $48,000 of those are scheduled repair and maintenance, which we pay a company to do. And the other 120 have been extra repairs and maintenance, which we don't foresee happening in the future, but they just happen to occur in this fiscal quarter. So and going forward, we think we should be more in line with the $48,000 annual agreement, which just keeps the status of the system going.
Was this a surprise or was it projected?
It was projected in the line item, but it wasn't projected to the extent of which it has occurred to this point. So but again, these are one-time things that are being repaired and fixed, and we don't anticipate these expenses moving forward. There was an evaluation done of the HVAC systems, and these things were found to be deficient, and they've been repaired, so.
We had fun to cover that kind of thing, did we?
Well, there is a budget in this line. Contractors and repair and maintenance are contractor account in general. If you look at it, this is contracts, whether it's for pest management, whether it's for electrical services. As you know, we've had in the budget an electrician, to hire an electrician for two years now. We haven't been able to fill that position. So we end up having on call electricians to come and do these services. So those are things that occur in the contractor line item. Garbage removal, these are annual contracts with companies for different services. Plumbing as well.
So we had money available to cover these surprises?
We do have money as of now.
Yeah.
Now, going forward, for the rest of the three fiscal quarters, we'll see we're still within budget on these line items, but that very much depends on what will happen the rest of the year.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. So the other, the community school. Community school has been, as you saw last year and this year, the trend has continued. The program revenues have improved greatly. I'm very happy with the improvement. It's over $50,000 in program revenue strictly. It does show as 35 if you look at the comparisons and on the report, because as you remember, last year, we got a $400,000 town appropriation plus $65,000 transfer to offset rental expenses. This year, we received an increase on the town appropriation from 400 to 450, but the $65,000 offset went away. So that's why altogether, the money received from town have decreased by $15,000. And so program revenues have increased. Instruction income in the adult ed, over $4,000. The pool has done great, over $14,000 increases and extended days close to $26,000. And drivers at 11.5. These are strong performance. They usually have been, but adult ed, especially the past two years, have been performing great as opposed to previous years. If you have any questions about the community school? Okay. The school launch program for the month of September, that's always a short month and always a front-loaded month of sorts. This is the month where inventory gets built up for the year as schools and kitchens open. So it operated at a deficit of around $26.5,000 compared to $25,424 for the same period last year. So a slight increase. We still have a $65,000 contractual agreement with Chartwell, so we're hopeful we won't need to go over that budgeted subsidy for the program. So far, I've spoken with Linda. The staffing levels are good. So that's always a, that was a major concern last year. This year, it's been good so far. So she's positive that the school launch program would perform hopefully smoothly for the rest of the year. Free and reduced. I know, Tim, you're interested in that. Stay steady, 40% in the first quarter or for the month of September as opposed to 39% of total you served last year.
That's amazing.
Yeah, it's held steady. I mean, we, there was growth, there has been fluctuations, but it has hovered around 40% consistently lately.
That's great.
But it's so much higher than where we used to be.
Yeah.
When I started three years ago, the first presentation I did for the first quarter, it was around 26%. So it's increased 14% in three years.
I remember when we were 8%. So this is amazing. Great.
Questions?
Just remind me, Martin, are we limited to the vendors where we purchase the food? Is there the state contractors, right, that we have to purchase the food from?
Chartwell uses a number of vendors that are state-approved, yes. That is correct, and that's in the contract that we have with them. But we also have an agreement here on Iowa, the memorandum of understanding with Sustainable and Tucket. So I always get an update from Linda as to how much we do last year. She said that it was a little bit inconsistent throughout the year, meaning sometimes she was looking for ingredients and products that weren't available or, but I think there is a great communication there and there is, I mean, I haven't heard anything, anything more about it this year so far.
Can we accept donations, like from the farms, if they wanted to donate food?
For the school lunch program? I would assume so, yes.
Okay.
Let's say more of a, I can relate that question to Chartwell's management.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to know.
I don't know whether there is a, whether these products need to answer some specific, I mean, standards, but I can relate that question and let you know.
That would be great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Are we concerned at all about, I know it's a slight decrease, but the sales decrease. Are we concerned about that at this point because it's the same number of operating days?
I have to see a full quarter. I mean, I always get, it's always misleading to judge a whole quarter on the basis of three weeks, which September is. And I would like to see the second quarter and when I present, which is coming up soon, I guess, in January, we would be able to take a look and see how the sales are doing per day. So.
Yeah, and maybe, do you get a breakdown by school?
Yes, I do. Yeah. I do get a detailed breakdown by school, by amount of lunches, participation rates, everything. So I can provide this information if you want me to. I can.
And how about specific menu items that are being offered that might not be popular to the kids? Do we get that specific?
Again, that would be a question to ask Linda Peterson, the food service director, as to how the different food items are performing. Pizza is very popular on a Friday.
Yes, it always has been, always will.
So but I mean, yes, seriously speaking, yes, I can relate that question as well and get an answer, yes.
I mean, it just would be interesting to watch the trend as we continue on. Thank you.
See you.
No, good, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
Thank you very much, Martin.
Okay, now we'll move into the John and Abigail Adams Scholars. Dr. Bucky will present them. And if you could line up along this wall.
So just as a reminder for the committee, the John and Abigail Adams Scholars are selected based on their MCAS score. They have the score advanced on one test and then proficient or higher on the other. They also need to be based on their MCAS scores within the top 25% of their class. So I'll read off their names, and if they want to line up along that railing, we'll then just ask them to share with the committee what their thoughts are for next year, what they're planning to do, although much of that remains in flux. Some of them have an idea of what they'd like to do. So our scholars this year, 34 of them, Paige Albertson, Alexa Aloysi, Brittany Anderson, Beck Barsanti, Maeve Colley, Andrew Chinister, Emmett Clark, Henry Dupont, Henry Flanagan, Seven Folger, Jenna Gensner, Cameron Gottlieb, Hudson HoShu, Gideon Holgate, Owen Hudson, Michael Humphrey, Bridget Kuvish, Jennifer Lamb, Gabrielle McAllister, Andrew Mauer, Jack McGowan, Jacqueline McGrath, Cooper Norris, Joseph Oslie, Sawyer Phillips, Stephanie Ryder, Jessica Sodskrimsky, Anna Stedman, Walker Stewart, James Tate, Leland Toplin, Leland Toplin, Viva Uterae V, whose name I'm going to have to learn to pronounce by the time June rolls around.
It's too bill.
Camden Willett. So you will start. You just introduce yourself.
I'm a senior at Antucket High School.
What are your plans for next year?
I'm applying to colleges. I haven't heard back yet, but I do plan to attend college.
Your first choice?
At the moment, I'm between University of Vermont and Boston University.
What idea of a major?
I want to major in chemistry on a pre-med track.
My name is Henry Dupont. I'm also a senior. I plan to attend college next year. My top is probably Northeastern University, and I also plan to do a pre-med track.
My name is Jen Lamb. I'm applying to college in around Boston. I'm also a senior. My top school is also Northeastern, and I'm looking to attend biochemistry with a pre-med.
I'm Anna Stedman. I'm applying to schools all over the United States. I'm hoping to go to the University of Vermont and study hospitality.
I'm Bridget Kuvish. I'm applying to schools probably in Massachusetts, New York, and, is it Georgia? Probably.
I'm Maeve Colley. I'm applying over in Oregon, Massachusetts, South Carolina. I think I want to go to college next year, whatever it wants to be brought. Maybe go to college, or not city, but defer to you into the WUP program. And when I do get to college, I'd like to study race and ethics.
My name is Edward Hudson. I'm mainly looking at students in the East of Boston. I plan to study business design, and I hope to pursue my challenges in the professional field.
My name is Gideon Holgate. I am also a senior. Planning to attend college in Boston and study either architecture or some trades or woodworking.
I'm James Tate. I'm applying to attend college, and I'm looking to be a student in the US Army. Major? Engineer.
So the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship entitles them to tuition-free at Massachusetts' public schools, and they can keep the scholarship for the four years there if they maintain 3.0 grade average or higher and maintain full-time status as a student. Congratulations, Martin.
Does the committee have any questions?
How's your, the pre-meds? Raise your hand.
First three.
So do you have a specific interest, each one, if you don't mind, in pre-med that you'd like to follow?
I know it's very apt to change, but I am very interested in trauma medicine. So I plan to get my EMT certification while I'm away at school.
Awesome.
Pre-med's always been like a good way for me to come out with science and compassion for others. I'm very interested in geriatric care. I'm not sure that one's going to fit quite yet, but.
Awesome.
I'm not pre-med.
Is that everyone? Thank you. I was just curious.
No questions, just congratulations to you all.
Congratulations and good luck.
Congratulations, and you're all looking to replace me. Oh, good luck to all of you, and I think you get a good start in Antucket High School, and I know you'll be successful in whatever you end up doing. Thank you.
And you don't have to stay for the whole meeting.
No.
If you want to go do your homework, we will understand.
For example.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
It is all. A few years later.
Yep. They grow up.
Okay, school improvement plans. Who wants to go first?
I'm going to give up and go over there.
Okay.
And. Well, no, but I think we're shorter chairs. She can take my chair.
Yeah, you're not getting up, Mike.
I don't. Okay. All right, I will accept that. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Kim.
Okay. So this is our elementary school improvement plan. I certainly want to be forthright and upfront and say, we start with the plan that we had. We wait for the district goals, and we do any necessary tweaking. So my hope is to just highlight some of those new things for you. On page three, in the goal one, which is about improving academic achievement and engagement, we have been fortunate enough to really make out this year. We have a lot of new resources at the elementary school, and we like to do that positive piece about how lucky we are, but it also is challenging, and it's really hard work for our staff. But I would call your attention to, we are doing interactive read-alouts, we are doing foundations, which is the wordwork program, and we are doing reader's workshop. And so all of those require a great deal of reading and planning and talking and thinking about the work, but it's been very fruitful, and we're seeing a lot of joy with kids and staff. In the next box, I mentioned the weekly professional learning communities. That's new this year. It's trickier in the elementary school because we don't have a lot of time that is common planning for teachers. They each have a prep a day, and we equal the 280 minutes this year. We did add an additional 40-minute time period, which will be reflected later, but that allows us to pull the grade level together and meet weekly, where we've been talking about reading workshops, we've been talking about math, we've been talking about phonics, we've been talking about writing. In the next bullet down, we have always taught or we've talked about teaching from that whole group down to small group, down to individual and center-based activities, and that's the way all of our content areas are taught. It's changed for reading and writing, certainly, that its strategy groups happen, and that's really based on we could be teaching nonfiction books right now, and a couple of kids need support with some teaching point in nonfiction that may look very different from the kids who might need support in a teaching point for narrative. So we are doing strategy groups. They're doing conferencing. All of that is a little bit different than what our teachers have been accustomed to. The nice thing is, we have had writing workshop for several years, and reading workshop does follow that similar plan, but there is a lot of background work that teachers are doing. Onto page four. When we talk about formative and summative assessments and consistent benchmarks, School City is a recent resource that both Mike Horton and Jean Witt are very, they're up to date with that, and Mike has most recently been supporting us with helping to create some common math assessments for our teachers so that all grade levels will be doing those, and we'll come back and talk about that in our PLC meetings. We have talked about the NES report card. We've talked about standard, standards report cards, and rather than take on something new, we're doing this concurrently. So what's happening is a great deal of our professional development this year is focused on the standards. And so what we're doing is keeping the report card we have, but making this ongoing list of our standards that we're teaching and when we're teaching them, so that we will then take that after this year and really build it into a new report card, but not reinvent the wheel for this year. That makes sense. On page five, I just highlight those new resources that we have, and we have had significant professional development, people coming over to present to our staff and work with our staff. They are coming to work with our staff too in a variety of formats. So there is a stand and deliver professional development that sometimes happens with experts, but we're also doing lab sites. So we're going into classrooms and doing that with the professional modeling for us, and then we come back and talk about it, and then the professional providing feedback to teachers as they do it, and then we come back and talk about it. So we're doing it in those three different formats. On to page six, looking at the NIS MCAS assessment data. We will be using some things with School City to create some assessments that we might be doing with our students, just to help build some format probably, but also some question type and language that students should become more familiar with. Onto page seven and goal three, this has to do with our positive classroom and school climate. We are sending new staff off to be trained in responsive classroom. That is something that we continue to discuss, tweak, revisit in January, and I do think that we will be doing, come together with all staff to really make sure that these are all the things we still believe in and we still want to maintain and be sure that we tighten up that fidelity and consistency for those things. On page eight, we are continuing to boost morale, and I'm really pleased that one of the parents on our school council, we've created this NES All-Stars. She, one of our parents, has created an Instagram page for NES, and we hope to have teachers nominated for Teacher of the Season and provide prizes to sort of boost our staff. We want to start sort of small, but our hope is to do something similar to what Dr. Bucky has, which is the Teacher and Student of the Month, but we're starting with teachers this year, but she's already solicited donations so that we can do that, so people can nominate teachers for season on Instagram, all nominated, go in a hat and pull someone out. Really big this year, and certainly we've been talking about it for a couple of years, but in an effort to create that common planning time to meet with staff, we needed to create another prep, if you will. We wanted it not to be a prep, but to really get back with guidance to support the social emotional learning. And so certainly, our guidance staff has come and presented to you over the years, and they've gone in and taught monthly lessons, they've gone in every other week and taught lessons, and they are now in weekly. And this past Friday, we had our coffee where they shared what SEL classes look like in our school to families. And it's really been great. We're seeing there are a lot of home connections that get shared by our guidance counselors, and language gets shared with the teachers so that once the guidance counselor leaves that lesson, they still continue that conversation with our classroom teachers. And then the last thing I would like to call your attention to is on page 10, and this really came from further development of the district goals. And we have expended and encumbered most of our professional development money for experts this year to come in. So we are trying to look at some ideas for doing some cultural awareness and sensitivity training for our staff, and because we've expended that, we don't think this year we'll be in the form of having someone come to us to present, but rather taking a look at some soliciting conversations with our staff and asking them for recommendations, but potentially looking at book studies, articles, that type of thing. So those are the new and different things.
Just on the cultural awareness piece, I wonder if there are outside entities that would maybe.
Volunteer to come in.
Volunteer to come in. I think we've got a lot of resources in our community. And maybe friends would also maybe support something or NET, maybe something. I'm just thinking of other resources for you. Kim, can you just, if, I don't know if you can tell me this tonight, but are you aware of teachers doing the mindfulness piece? We've talked about that in the past, and I know some of that is already incorporated in the social emotional curriculum, but I'm just wondering if teachers are practicing that at all at the beginning of class?
So certainly, it happens sporadically. When we were pre-K 5, we had some teachers who participated in a mindfulness training, and that was our entire fifth grade, and they did it with Jen Laredo, our school psychologist, who had really taken that on. She worked with some third-grade teachers who did it in their rooms. It wasn't grade, wasn't the whole grade, and through those conversations, other people got pieces of it. So different specialists might do it to start a lesson, they might do it to end the lesson. In, I can't give you the exact numbers of who is doing it, but I do believe it happens in music. It happens in PE. There are a couple of classroom teachers who use it, and it definitely is part of the weekly SEL lessons, and there is a resource called Mind Yeti, like those containers. And I could certainly provide you more information about that. We shared it with our families during the coffee, but that has a moment or two of mindfulness and helping kids to focus in strategic ways.
Thank you. Can you remind me, did we used to have as a goal, keeping our class sizes down or at a certain, not a specific number, but keeping them down?
I always raised that at budget time.
Okay.
So while it's not, we don't, I don't believe we have anything in exact policy.
Okay.
Our best recommendations are always to keep pre-K to 18 to 22 students, and then we talked about 3 to 5, 22 to 25, but we are well within our 18 to 22.
That's good to know. Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, how do I find you on?
Yeah, how do I find you on Instagram and Facebook?
So Facebook is...
I would just look up Nantucket Elementary School.
Yes.
Does Instagram work the same way? I don't do that yet.
Yeah, so I need my children to support me with some of those things. But the Instagram that you want to follow is N E S underscore news. And not only are we doing that for that All-Stars, but we use it, much like we use Facebook, to, got a coffee tomorrow.
Right, well, that's why I wanted to know, so I could keep up with...
N E S underscore news.
Great, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Ery McNeil, Principal of Nantucket Elementary School. And this is our school improvement plan. You'll notice that there are two large goals. And I didn't have a third separate goal for family and community engagement this year, because I felt in order to reach, achieve the objectives leading up to our goals, that it has to be embedded in those two goals. So you'll see it there. I'll try to highlight that for you. So our first goal is focused on academic achievement and student engagement, making sure our curriculum's aligned, and it's intentional, inclusive, and evidence-based. So what's new? We talk about math a lot, and we try to continuously improve our performance in math. So that we're grateful for year two with Eureka Math. Year two feels so much better than a year one with a new curriculum. And already, teachers are excited about the, how pacing has improved in order, you know, in a year two than a year one to get to more of the curriculum. We still have common planning times this year again. And every other common planning time is devoted to math and/or science. And Mr. Horton comes to those and supports the work. And also, at all of our common planning, grade-level common planning times, we have our E S L teachers, our special educators, our T As, because we want everybody to be contributing to the conversations with regard to achievement and curriculum and assessment. We've worked hard to refine our, both our math intervention this year and redefine our math enrichment program. We really wanted to increase the alignment between what's happening in the classroom with what's happening for students who need more support and for students who are high-achieving. We wanted there to be a stronger link between the math curriculum and what, and the work that they're doing. Let's see. We are strategically providing co-teaching with the math interventionist and a classroom teacher in grade five. When we noticed that there was a cohort of students who, there was a strong... Although the class was balanced in every other way, when we looked at it with regard to math, we noticed that there were a lot of students who were performing below level. So we implemented that this year too, to support their math growth and progress. And like N E S, we're exploring the use of edulastic to create formative and summative assessments. And then I also put as an action step to advocate for a math coach, similar to how we have an E L A coach this year, which is making a lot of difference. Let's see. And as always, we're trying to observe teaching and learning, particularly in math and in E L A, so that we can give specific and targeted feedback to teachers about their instruction. So our biggest shifts are happening in English Language Arts. Last year, we did a whole needs assessment. We looked at what we had for resources, what we were using, what each classroom looked like, what was the alignment like between classrooms and between grade levels. And then we had a literacy committee come together to examine all of those questions. And we came to the conclusion that we needed a comprehensive, rigorous, and aligned curriculum across our school. And I'm grateful that N E S is also engaged with regard to implementing the Reader's Workshop units of study, the Lucy Coffins units of study. So that's, that's been our big initiative this year, is implementing that reading program. And already, we're seeing the impact it has to students' desire to read and their excitement about reading and love of books. We're also focused on more explicit teaching with regard to word study. And at our level, we use a program, we're implementing a program called Words Their Way, where it's differentiated for students based on their knowledge already of words. They're at different levels, and they, they are able to work to... It's neat, because it's not just a teacher upfront, teaching one word pattern, but it's students discovering word patterns in groups and collaboratively, based on their level and what level that they're at. So we take them where they are to build where they're headed next. And for our high-achieving learners, they're working on word derivations and things like that. So it applies to all. We also, again, are redefining what our enrichment looks like and what our reading intervention looks like, to increase the alignment between those programs and our regular classroom programs. So that's all new, lots new there. And just to identify the embedded pieces with family engagement, we have a literacy evening every year. We have a math evening. And our teachers are doing a wonderful job informing their families of what, what children are learning about in class, in each classroom, and how they can support that learning at home through newsletters and other apps that they have. And again, we have all represented at our common planning meetings. E S L, special education, classroom teachers, teaching assistants, to support that work. And we're grateful for the implementation of, or how we have Donna Johnson share between N E S and N I S to support, especially the, I forgot to mention the, you, but Kim mentioned it, all the work we're doing with standards, particularly in English Language Arts. And most of our half-days and some of our full-days are devoted to that work. So that's exciting, to see all of those shifts. It's a lot. So while we're doing all of that work, we haven't lost sight of, but we will probably dive into it a little more robustly each year forward, transitioning to the 2016 Science and Technology Engineering Curriculum Standards. We're doing a little bit, and we know we need to do more, but every year, we add a little bit more. And then, just this summer, the Social Studies standards changed. So that's brand-new. So we're gonna, we will spend some time looking those over and thinking about the shifts and changes for each grade level. Some are impacted more than others with regard to those standards, but we need to keep our eye on that as well and how we are going to embed. Social Studies is nice, because we can embed some of the content with our English Language Arts work, and to get to meet those standards as well. So that covers it for academics. And then our other big goal is about continuously improving and promoting a positive and safe working and learning culture based on shared beliefs and core values. And I broke that down into some different objectives. The first is ensuring that we all have common shared beliefs when it comes to what students and families need to have a successful school experience, and teachers as well. And so we have been working on articulating our core values. And now, our next step is to make them student-friendly, involve our families with regard to that. So we're still at the beginning of that work, but we're moving forward, because we know all of our decisions are going to come back to what we value. So it's important to be able to articulate that. Our second objective is to ensure a physically safe campus, school campus. And that includes things like security and safety, and our monthly safety walks, and communication. We do a lot of communicating about safety and security at our school, and always trying to improve that. Our high expectations are communicated by following school rules, family involvement, counselor involvement, restorative justice, progressive discipline. We, we don't do that in isolation. We involve our families too, with regard to those things. And we're getting better and better at that. Another thing that you'll notice as evidence of attainment is, and I'm really optimistic by saying, no student-to-student or student-to-staff physical aggression. There shouldn't be that in schools, but there can be. So we're really, that bleeds into our next goal, ensuring a safe intellectual environment across our school campus through the promotion and implementation of strong social-emotional learning programming methodologies, relationship building. So we do, we consider ourselves a responsive classroom school. We try to send our new staff to responsive classroom training. We sent three new staff last summer. And we'll keep looking at ways to get everybody trained. We're working really hard with an outside consultant. We started last year, and this year, our focus is on building a really strong Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. And those tiers represent the level of intensity with regard to supporting students and intervening for those that need it with social-emotional learning and growth. We spent a good part of today working with our consultant on next steps for us with our Tier One social-emotional learning curriculum. He's helping our guidance counselors to build that and to help implement that. And we spent a lot of time working on our Tier Three. How do we restructure and revamp our current programs and our current school personnel to truly meet the needs of some of our students who are showing us they need more than what they're getting? We, on the next one, it's maintaining and strengthening positive and culturally proficient school climate. They're all kind of overlap a little bit, but that's where you'll find our efforts to increase opportunities to support students to demonstrate respect for and affirm their own and others' differences and similarities regarding, you know, background, identity, language, strengths, challenges, so our cultural proficiency there. We are exploring new community partnership opportunities. As you mentioned, you know, that idea for having a culturally proficient learning environment. The beginning of the school year, we were able to have children's code come in and do some training on students who've experienced trauma and what that looks like, and what's a trauma-informed classroom, because all of that is part of being culturally proficient as well. Including other strands of what it means to be culturally proficient. We're actively seeking to remove barriers preventing families from engaging in school events. How can we get everybody to come and join in and feel a part of it? And we're also working really hard to have our students let us know what they want in terms of extra kind of curricular-type activities. And already in place this year is a student-initiated kindnessness club at the fifth grade level. And we're trying to grow that by having some fourth graders involved, so that they can take the reins next school year. So that's just one example that we, that started the year. So I know there's more in there, but I'll take any questions you might have.
Steve? Now, first of all, thank you for having math at the top of the list. I don't know if that shows any preference for it, but I'm glad to see the steps that you're taking to improve the math scores. What's a math interventionist?
So we are fortunate at N I S to have somebody who is their full-time job to support and progress monitor students who are performing below grade level with regard to math. So they, she supports us with accurately identifying who they are, works with our administrative team to, it's hard to decide who gets the extra help, because there are, quite honestly, more students who are below grade level than we can support that way. But we also know we can support our students in the regular classroom through small-group instruction as well. So she...
So is this a full-time person that's already on staff?
Yep. Yep, and she was here when I came. So we're just working hard to align what she's doing with what students are doing in classrooms, what they need to know. So there's a better connection for them, so we're not creating new gaps for them, but we're supporting all the prerequisite skills they need to access the classroom instruction.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
No, I'm just really appreciative this is so thorough. And I can tell that a lot of time and thought went into this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Amy?
I agree with Jen's comments. I'm wondering, many years ago, Kim, Mike, and I participated in a school and parent education weekend, community school. Put it together with, I think, a couple of outside programs. And we met at St. Paul's for three days with the Caribbean Network of Parents, but it was also other network, other parent groups. And it was extremely powerful, I felt, because it really was an opportunity to talk about differences in raising children and education and support from schools. And I'm wondering if this would be a good time to reach out to the community school, and again, through Nantucket Education Trust. We had a phenomenal social worker from New York. And she was the one who facilitated the program. And I just think it really was wonderful, and I think it helped a lot of families. And maybe this is an appropriate time to, I think it might be better for the younger families, for N E S and N I S perhaps, but just a thought. And I'd be happy to reach out to the Reverend who helped find the lady. It'd be great to have her back. And I'm happy to work with that, to see if we could help support that happen, if you're interested.
That sounds a good...
It was very enlightening for us, maybe more than for them, just to understand how a culture raises its children that might be, might have been different than other cultures.
Right, and looking for resources and looking, and understanding the actions of the school, rather than just straight discipline. It was opening up and understanding in a non-threatening manner what the rules and regulations are in America, and how does that work here, and how can we help support families? And then there was also one-on-one counseling I think you provided. But anyway, I'd be happy to work with you or get some of the background sorted out, if you're interested.
The gentleman is not here anymore.
He isn't, but he's on the Cape.
Reverend Gentleman?
Yeah, he's on the Cape. He's easily find, findable.
I was wondering if you could, and I was expecting to be first to the word. This gave my, the, planning. That was a C-word, combined planning.
Oh, collaborative planning?
Collaborative planning. Could you provide a brief overview of what that looks like?
Sure, tell me where you specifically started, it doesn't really matter. So when it comes to academics, we're doing a lot of collaborative planning in our professional learning communities, our common planning times. That's when we have all the classroom teachers. If it's E L A-focused, we'll have Donna Johnson there. In the past, we had Jean Witt there. We'll have our E S L teacher. We'll have our, actually, Francie Baskin, our enrichment teacher, will come to some of them, the teaching assistant, the special ed teacher. So that when we're looking at next steps for instruction or analyzing assessment data, we're looking at it from every lens. Like, how are English learners doing? How are special education students doing? How can we, we're looking to our E S L teachers to offer us suggestions for, you know, where it makes sense to add language frames or, you know, to support the teachers' work that way. That's what I mean when I say collaborative. You know, I'd love to say that every single meeting in forty-five minutes, fifty minutes, we can get all the way there. But sometimes, it ends short of getting to the end of the planning. But then I know teams continue to plan beyond that time. That's just a time that includes administrators and everybody there. And then for social-emotional learning, every single week, our S E L team meets the same. They all get together. That includes our social worker, our guidance counselors, administrators, a school psychologist. And in those meetings, we're talking about our instruction, our, in those tiers, like, what does it look like, how can we improve it? And we're also sharing strategies for supporting students, collaborating that way. And we're also talking about, in those meetings, we can talk about some individual cases that we're trying to problem-solve or do a better job at supporting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go.
All right, I'm Peter Cohen, Principal of Cyrus Pierce Middle School. Thanks for having us and giving us the opportunity to share our improvement plans. The CPS Improvement Plan, I Plan, follows the I theme. It's broken down into four, four goals. goals: instruction, intervention, innovation, and imagination. It's a format we switched to a couple of years ago, strayed from last year, and are going to return to it this year. And so under the category of instruction, and I think you received probably a long form, so there's a little preamble before you get to the goals, but I'll skip to the goals, but then happy to trace back to the preamble if you'd like. So under the first goal of, under the category of instruction, it's really focused on high-quality professional development that's going to help us improve both our curriculum, making sure that it's standards-based in every way, standard-based teaching, learning, and assessment and grading, and focused on that transition to a standards-based learning environment where everything is done based on how we can measure whether or not students are making progress towards the standards. So that it's not just on the MCAS in the spring that they're measured on that, but that everything we do is measured on that, so that our assessments are all predictors of how students will do on the MCAS. So the other component of that instructional goal is really knowing the data, and we've got a few different data points, so it's not just the MCAS, which, as we've talked about, kind of lags behind because of the timing that we get it. So we use the MAP, measured academic progress, that we assess the kids three times a year using that tool, and that gives us more real-time data. And the company that runs MAP has asked for access to our data as well as some other messages at school so that they can do a correlational study. And so now the reports are becoming more informative from MAP in terms of being able to be predictors of not just how kids will do on MAP from fall to spring, but how kids do on MAP, projecting how that translates to an MCAS score. So it's really becoming quite useful data. And so that really is kind of answering a couple of foundational questions of professional learning communities, which is, what do we want kids to know and be able to do, and how are we going to know whether or not they have learned it, know what we want them to know, and can do what we want them to do. And so that leads us to the second goal, which is really about intervention, and that answers kind of the second two questions of the professional learning community, which is what do you do when kids aren't learning, or what do you do when they already know it? And so it's really intervening on both, in a way, for remediation, but also for extension. So math in particular is where we hit that at both ends with additional time on math through the Math Boost program for kids that need additional time, but also advanced math classes in each grade level to be able to push the top students at a more accelerated pace. Also, intervention is developing, you heard some of my colleagues talk about a tiered system of support, and so that's part of the goal as well. And it's focused not just on academics, but also on social-emotional learning and behavior as well. And so we've put in place things like the new Dean of Students, a new Student Success Program, which is, we're working towards alignment of that program to Andrew Vasselli's program, which you'll hear about in December. And so the interventions are, again, not solely based on the academic side of things, but also on the social-emotional side of things as well. As we move forward to Goal Three, Innovation, really some of these things aren't necessarily innovative in that it's, we are not the only school doing these things across the country. Many schools are doing things like this, but it's focused on empowering teachers and creating teacher leaders, figuring out the right balance in terms of the use of technology, making sure that our teachers are connected educators so that they have a network that spans well beyond the island, so that they can be up-to-date with best practices and put those best practices and effective practices in place here. At the end, it's that transition to standards-based teaching, learning, and grading. It's the use of social media to be able to tell our story. You've heard us all say in the past that we need to promote the wonderful things that we do, and so we use social media to be able to do that and to make connections with the community and beyond. And it's also, again, the use of data. And then finally, the category that we added a couple of years ago that is not necessarily a specific goal in that some of these things may just simply be conversation starters, but they're worthy of consideration, is the imagination category. And the imagination category has some of the things that you as a committee have raised as topics for discussion, things like exploring length of the school day, that, again, CPS in isolation doesn't have jurisdiction over some of these things, but some of them they would, but they're still worthy conversations of length of the school day, school uniforms, transition to student-led conferences, which will take place this year, expanding our advisory program that's become really quite robust over the past couple of years, and revisiting project-based learning, because I think that that is something that would allow us to really reach many of the goals in this if we transitioned more universally to project-based learning at our school, at the middle school level. And all of this is based on extensive research, but also exploration of what schools across the country are doing. So our I Plan, Instruction, Intervention, Innovation, and Imagination for 2018-19.
Project-based learning, I'd be curious to see the data on that and how well they did on the tests. So if you could provide that information.
Yeah, I think I heard that in the past that it's, there's no discernible difference between students that participate in the project-based class over the past couple of years compared to their peers, the same number of students.
So you compare a normal classroom to that classroom and maybe at the same stage in their education?
Right.
And no real data stood out one way or the other?
Correct.
I'd just be curious to see on the last test how that went.
Yeah.
There's a lot of information here. Can you just guide me to where there may be goals, and I see around parent involvement, but community involvement or parent involvement?
So some of that is in the idea of connecting, let's see, I have a summary in front of me, so I have to find that.
I was trying to keep up with you, but you're going so fast.
Sorry about that.
If I can jump in, you've got the piece in Goal Three on social media promoting the story.
Right, so page sixteen. And that's, so that's really about connecting people through a variety of different platforms. So whether that be, again, Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, or weekly newsletters. We're now using the Remind app this year, which is a text messaging app. What we've found is informal data indicates that some of our families don't utilize email. So while email's been the primary mode of communication in the past, we still use that, but we're not reaching 100% of our families by using email exclusively. So we've tried to create like a kind of 360-degree approach to be able to connect the school to families. And so a lot of our families that don't necessarily have email or even access to computers outside of the Chromebook that we give them do have smartphones and cell phones, and so we'll use the text messaging app, which has like translation built in.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. No questions, thank you.
Steve?
Oh, boy. This is a very optimistic plan. I don't know if that's a positive comment or a questioning comment. There's so much in here. A couple of things, and I'm going to go to the last one first. You said something about our MAP data being provided to or used by the MAP people. Is that a privacy concern? Do they just look at data without names? How does that work?
Yeah, there's a privacy agreement when we share that, and again, we couldn't do it exclusively with just our district, we'd do it with any other districts across Massachusetts. Basically, they've done that for years with initial MCAs, and now that MCAs is 2.0, they needed new data and permission to use it, so we've granted them, they have access to our data and the MAP scores anyways.
Right.
So now we've opened it up to be able to see the MCAs as well.
But again, without student names or anything being disclosed further than us.
Right. I mean, they use it simply so that their test is aligned, so that they're not outliers. It's that same triangulation process that we've talked about with MAP and grades and MCAs, that if all of a sudden, like, kids are doing well on MAP, they're doing well in the classroom, but they're not doing well in the MCAs, or you could do any variable. If there's an outlier, then something's off. And so this allows MAP to be a clear connection and predictor of how kids will do on the MCAs. There's kind of some interesting charts that I could send you that show kind of globally, as an individual student too, but like, grade six, like, as of just the fall round of MAP testing, it'll say at this point, how many kids are projected to be in each of the four categories of MCAs. So that data is great and will become more and more reliable over more years as they have MCAs.
Correlation study.
Yeah, correlations.
So they'll be doing some of that, and it'll be useful to us as well.
Correct, yep.
As much as I like the idea of thinking about a longer day, I'm wondering what the point of CPS looking at it is and how that would work into our budget process. I mean, it would seem to me that it's almost, if you're going to come up with a plan, some thoughts about it, it almost has to be within the next couple of months if we're going to actually look at it as something that might be viable in the district.
Yeah, in the short term, it's much more about the discussion so that if the school committee started to move in that direction, you would then be able to reach out to our school council, who will have conversations this year about like, what is an optimal start time, and what kinds of things would you add to the school day if it's a longer school day so that we're not all of a sudden just dumping, you know, more stress on students? We'd want to be balanced about that. So you'd have a middle school perspective based on conversations that we'd have at the school council level. So it's not an actionable item in that we're just one school of a school district. It's just, you know, when districts look at school day, the research varies depending on age groups in terms of how much sleep and what the ideal start time is, and so we'd want to look at that through a middle school lens.
Seems to be a lot of hopeful staffing increases mentioned in here. First of all, someone asked about class sizes, and that, if I recall, is something that by statute for the school council has to look at every year, is class sizes. And in your preamble, you mentioned concerns about class sizes.
Yes.
I am assuming or presuming that that could require more staffing. You also mentioned a tech person, a social worker, and then I'm just going to call it a behavior interventionist.
Right.
So that would be in addition to our new Dean of Students who has behavioral responsibilities?
So there's a few things there, and in some ways, this is previewing our budget presentation, so I don't know how deeply you want me to go, but, for example, the social worker position, we share a social worker between the high school and the middle school. So if we wanted to increase that person to full-time at the high school, for example, we would want to make sure we add a social worker at the middle school. We couldn't go without. The technology is on there to simply keep it on the radar, figuring out how to keep some of the things that you, Steve, have raised, in particular, like digital citizenship and digital literacy, those kinds of components. How do we make sure we embed that? So I don't know that that'll lead to a staff person, per se, because I think our library-media specialists can take on some of that, but I want it in the plan because I don't want to lose sight of the need to have those technology components in there. The behavior thing would be a district thing. It's called a BCBA, which is someone that we work with now, but on a contractual basis that travels from off-island, and so if that ends up in the budget, it would be just to have someone like that full-time, not necessarily specific to CPS, but district-wide.
And do you think that there'll be a request? I know this is a bit premature, but you've obviously been thinking about it. Need for additional core staffing, given your class sizes? And by core, I'm including art, theater, music, you know, every day, every days.
I anticipate requesting probably an additional encore teacher in this current year, but we definitely are going to want to look at class sizes. And the way that plays out in the middle school is primarily with science classes and social studies classes. So our English learners, for example, maybe take English with an English learner teacher, but they're still included in a science classroom. So all kids basically are in our science classes. So we're probably, in the short term, we'll look to add core teachers because our eighth grade class is roughly 136, 37, I think, I started the year, maybe it's down to 135. They'll leave, and the incoming fifth grade coming in is right now 139, 140, so that's pretty much a wash. So there really wouldn't be justification, I don't think, in this year, but if the numbers continue to go up, we would want to look at it.
But your preamble says you've got some
There are some big
very large classes. Are those primarily at the encore level?
Correct.
Right.
Correct. Just revisiting the conversation to keep it on the radar. Zona and I like to kick around that idea from time to time. Doesn't hurt to have a conversation.
Stay in the game. Stick to the game.
Yeah, but at this point, they're just conversations to keep these things alive.
Yeah. It's so interesting, because in September, I may have had a stronger answer to that. Now that it's winter, it's not as much of an issue.
Right.
And in June, I might, you know, have a stronger answer to that. So it's just to keep it on our radar.
Yeah, well, my biggest concern is all the, well, math, first of all, but you've referenced that stuff again, but it just looks like a lot of staffing requests are going to be coming, and I hope the town is going to be helpful.
Me too.
Thank you.
One more question. This is just a suggestion, but
Sure.
as you have some items here that are just out for discussion, and you spoke, like, talking about the school day, the length of the school day. My opinion from school committee, I think it would be helpful, I know you're going to do this within your school, but I think if you want to come back at some point and present your findings, it would be helpful to have also include, will also include, and maybe you're planning on doing this, but the other three schools, just because I think that it will be helpful to hear from all of the four schools to see if there's unity or not, because I think that is a bold step, and I think we've talked about that, trying to fit everything into a school day is impossible. But I would just ask you to consider making sure that you spread those conversations out through all four schools.
I think we, you know, all of us really are kind of waiting. You guys have put it on the kind of parking lot or on the horizon a couple of times, and so we would wait for directive from you before we would have any kind of really district-wide conversation.
Okay.
Henry?
Yeah, I'd love to see the Math Boost, as I said last time. I am a little confused, maybe I misunderstood you last time you answered my question, but I still feel like we should make, or you should make rather, the required class, an extra math class in the boost, in ELA. I know you were talking about how you feel that the literacy is affecting the math scores. I feel like if our students were struggling with literacy so much, it would reflect more in their English test than it would in their math test. And I also feel like the Math Boost is the same thing as an extra math class, except it's only catering to half the students. So I feel like because we do more core lean math than we do language, so it would be maybe something to consider swapping those two.
It's definitely worth considering, and I don't know that we'll get there for next year, but every year, we have that debate for sure. for next year, but every year we, we have that debate for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
Dr. Buckey?
Cheeky is what you are.
So I was saying, Mr. Sortovic, on the way in, this is a fit anticlimactic for the high school school improvement plan because I have the opportunity to present to school committee more often than most when it comes to advanced placement results, a dropout report, the MCAS results, the guidance report. So many of the things that are included in the high school school improvement plan, you have seen previews of those reports. I just want to thank our school council. We have a three-year school improvement plan. We are in year two of that. We have some new members. Chris Beebe is a new parent member and Jeffrey Turner. And we have a new staff member, Monique Malloy, who is, who took Karen Mangis's place when she retired this spring. And I have kept Pam Goddard and Donna Muir on as perpetual community reps along with Janet Schulthein, the longest-serving school council representative I think that we've had. So appreciate the school council. Similar to my colleagues, the first school improvement plan goal is increased academic achievement. Particular focus for us has been special education, English language learners and math. I just want to run down that column for evidence of attainment and give you some highlights. Bio and math saw an increase in the number of proficient and advanced scores this year. Again, English scores have always been solid, so I don't want them to feel like they're point seven tenths of a decrease is anything for us to be concerned about. We have an increase in the number of advanced placement students from thirty-eight to thirty-nine percent. We went from fifty-one to fifty-three percent in the number that scored a three or higher. The PSAT, we moved to a Saturday many years ago. The first year, we ordered a hundred tests and a hundred and fifty students wanted to take it. And so the next year, we ordered a hundred and fifty tests. Anybody want to finish? A hundred students signed up for it. So we're eventually going to be able to pinpoint that number, but we have between a hundred and a hundred and fifty students who elect to come in on a Saturday to take the PSAT. Increase in verbal and math scores in our SAT results. The verbal scores went up by nine points. The mathematics scores went up by ten. We are expanding programs in vocational, a point-two increase in our gardening and landscape class, additional offerings in graphic design. And something that I'm very excited about, the Egan Foundation, Dorothy Egan Foundation has renewed our grant with them. And so Jess Davis is, Douglas, I'm sorry, Jess Douglas is currently getting certified as a CNA teacher. And so we're hoping to have a certification course in nursing and allied health.
Fantastic.
That's an exciting piece. Special needs students, as you heard from my MCAS presentation, is, needs to be an area of increased focus for us. Our MCAS results across the board for students with special needs were not where we would want them to be. So that will be a particular area of focus this year. L students had mixed results. Math scores were very solid. We saw increases in the SAT math, which I just talked about, highest number of qualifying scores in AP calculus and a ten percent or a number of students on open response, those scores.
Sorry, Duncan. L's or overall?
Overall math.
Overall.
In the aggregate. Goal two, safe culture and climate, similar to my colleagues. Again, appreciated the district's emphasis on social emotional learning. And we have some pieces that we would like to integrate in the final two years of our plan. Our daily attendance rate did improve. We have a number of new clubs and activities at the high school, including a tea club for students who like to drink tea, a meditation group that comes in at seven AM on Monday morning and does meditation before school, and then a crime scene investigation group that is a spinoff of Dr. Hinson's forensic science class. So we have a number of students that are proposing new clubs and we approve those as they bring them forward. Three percent increase in our participation in interscholastic athletics. We'll be doing the Credit for Life Fair again. That will be Tuesday of next week. If you have not attended that, I would certainly invite you to attend. Credit for Life Fair is very eye-opening for our students. We appreciate that partnership with the local bank. Programs that we do, SST, we just did a very good program called the Yellow Dress, which was very well received. The improbable players were here. And we have our annual science and suicide program scheduled for November twenty-ninth. We have two SROs now, so we continue to expand that program. We will have the annual dropout report. That is always a year behind. So I have the graduating class of two thousand and seventeen is the most current data for that. We are working on some social emotional learning initiatives. We're talking to a group about coming in and doing some unconscious biased work for us at the start of next school year during the four August professional development days. Certainly, the support that you all have provided us in school counseling is paying dividends. They are able to get out into classes and do some guidance curricula in the high school that we have not been able to do.
Fantastic.
So I appreciate that. We're working through my association and the state principals group with the Rennie Center. They have offered social emotional learning grants to a number of pilot districts. And so we're kind of progress monitoring that work. And I think they're going to open another round of grants at the beginning of next year. So we may consider joining that consortium. And I was just in a class today, Mrs. Proch, that started with two minutes of mindfulness. And if you can get ninth graders, twenty-seven of them to be exact, to sit silently and focus on mindfulness, we're doing something right. The increased communication, I, I think the, the next two goals are pretty self-explanatory. And we provide you some updates and a final two addenda if you have any questions about what we're doing to engage families or work to improve the learning culture at the high school.
Owen?
Good, thank you. I have a question. So the social worker home visits, is that something we're hoping to start? Because I think that's a fantastic idea to
Actually, Julie Kingston does a number of home visits.
Oh, currently?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
And I would echo Dr. Cohen's comments that if we could make that a full-time position at the high school and then open one, because right now, I think Julie feels unfairly pulled in one direction more than the other. But she does a number of home visits now.
That is fantastic. I think that's a really key piece. And then you said the annual SOS program, is that just for ninth graders? Or do we do that?
Yes.
Okay, just ninth grade.
We do seventh grade and ninth grade.
Ninth grade, yep. Okay. Thank you.
Easy one. When and where is the, did you call it Credit for Life?
Credit for Life Fair will be in the auditorium and then in the gymnasium for about three hours on Tuesday.
The twentieth?
Yes.
Starting?
I'm going to say nine o'clock.
Arg, okay.
It is terrific.
Well, no, only because it, it
Yeah, conflicts with
The NES guest readers program is that morning as well.
Even if you came late.
If we came late.
Yeah.
You have time.
You would still, you would still benefit from
You have time to do both, Steve.
Yeah.
And you can, I can connect you with Duncan McCallister, who signs people if you're looking for volunteer station. Just saying.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, John.
Do you want to come back to the dress?
Okay.
I already brought this in.
Okay.
Committee discussion and votes to be taken. The crowdfunding policy, we're not
Right, that's already been approved. And I didn't pull that and Jen brought it to my attention. That was approved at the September eighteenth meeting. And there were no changes after that based on conversation. So I think we're set there.
So that was the one that questions were raised about?
Mm-hmm.
You've spoken with those people on the school?
I have, yep.
Okay. Moving on to meeting minutes of November sixth.
Don't have them in the packet, but we did.
We take them on email.
So make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second. Owen, favor?
Aye.
Transfers and invoices.
Sumut.
Second.
Owen, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Superintendent's report.
Just wanted to share the goals. I think I, I know I sent them to you last Thursday and Logan's provided you a copy. Very similar to, well, it's the identical format to the, what the administration has in determining their goals. There's a professional practice goal. There's at least one student learning and then some district improvement. Mathematics features prominently in the student learning as it has in the, in the past and will continue. And also supporting the social and emotional needs and learning of the district students. So you'll, you should see a lot of parallels with the district goals and, and the superintendent's goals because your goals are my goals. The continuing to promote the use of, of data, and I think you've heard from each of the principals about how they are analyzing and interpreting the data and using it to inform decisions and instruction. And then working to, with the facilities director in the town of Nantucket Capital Committee to once again address space concerns. We've, we've talked about that at a few meetings now. And particularly at the middle and high school levels. Right now, we're starting conversations and getting things put on, you know, a five-year plan. But again, that's, we're just going to have to watch that enrollment. If it continues to grow fifty to a hundred students a year, then that's going to have to be accelerated. So we're having those conversations and the cap, capital committee has, has welcomed those conversations. So that's been very helpful. And then goal that we've had each year was that budget development process. We will begin that at the next meeting. I'm going to, going to share it a little bit differently this year in that I'm going to share some things that undoubtedly, when you put all the numbers together in the two December reports, inevitably will be over what our appropriation's going to be. But I wanted you to see the requests at each school and appreciate the challenge that we will then have in meeting the appropriation. But, you know, Peter hit on it and, and other people. There are, a lot of the things that we've been talking about are going to show up in those budget presentations. Social worker, the math coach and, you know, preschool. So I don't think that there will be a lot of, of surprises when this starts to be, to, when we start to roll that out. And then finally, visible and accessible. I've had that every year and tried. I'm, I'm maybe not quite as accessible this year, at least at the beginning of this year, but I'm, I'm still hoofing it and getting around.
Question, Mike. Why didn't you put in visible and accessible? Why didn't you put students in?
You know, that's, I didn't. I probably should. I think I am. I think, you know, I, I pop in often even into the Veritas piece, place and, and check in. So I can, I can put that in and hit that ball.
Yeah, you should.
Sure. Be happy to.
Is there a provision about not getting hurt playing soccer with elementary school kids?
No.
And I say, I just, I appreciate goal number two. The focus on mathematics, I think, is consistent with our goals and needs.
It is that.
Any other questions, Zona?
No.
Questions about the goals? No.
Okay. Subcommittee.
You know, if I, if I may, I didn't put it on the horizon, but it's in there for you in pretty good shape. We, you will notice that we'll have another enrollment update in December fourth, but the budget development will be tech, athletics, facilities and community school. That's what we'll start off with. And the student success program, I think we would be prepared to have Mr. Vasili come. I'm not sure yet that it's time to have Mr. Ganella from CPS. I think we need to let him get his program underway and a little bit more time before we have that presentation. I've had that conversation with Peter. So it'll, it'll just be Andrew. Okay?
Can we just go back to this for one second?
Sure.
It'll take two because they talked about this at this conference that I went to. Is this single page the document that we use to evaluate you at the end of the year?
So you will use that. That is incorporated into the Massachusetts system.
Yeah.
And so that is a piece and, and you will look at that. You will also get a self-evaluation by me. And in, in years past, we've used an evaluation of me by the administrative team, the leadership team. And then each member of the school committee individually will develop that, their evaluation of me based on the rubric provided by the, the Department of Ed. And then you will come together. Usually you have a subcommittee come together and they will take all of those pieces of information and pull them into one document that is presented at a school committee meeting typically end of March.
And is that this one?
That is not this one. This is a piece of that. I can send that to you ahead of time if you'd like it.
Because they sort of slid over that at the conference. They were more interested in
There's about a
Things that the attorney general had said about open meetings, et cetera. So they ran out of time on superintendent devaluation.
It's about a thirty-page document and I send it out each year.
You have a document out at the conference. And I just wanted to say, it's, it's like this, but it's a little bit more involved. These are the questions on the actual evaluation.
It's like the teacher, it, there are four standards?
Yeah, right. I go over and there seemed to be in the rubric, and they admitted it. An awful lot of these things in the rubric.
Very comprehensive.
Far too many, in fact.
I agree. Too much.
So.
It is the only public evaluation of a, you know,
Senior administrator.
Senior administrator in, you know, in most communities.
Through the chair. Logan just reminded us as well. It's on the website.
Our website?
Yep.
The whole thing?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Henry? I have been reminded by Mike and Jen that we didn't have comments from the public. Seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sorry, just have a committee, committee report. I know you went to Henry.
I did, Henry.
Student success, I mean, student support committee met today. And there was a lot of dialogue around the increased behavioral health needs in our district. But I will say that our administration are actively working on solutions for that. I always find it a very helpful and useful committee to attend just because it's our admin, it's our counselors, and it's also community support liaisons as well, our mental health providers. So anyway, I, as we've talked about a little bit and we've touched upon, I think we'll be hearing more of their efforts when we go through the budget process. And lastly, N-18, Nantucket Education Trust will be meeting this week. We've been working on an annual appeal letter. We've had a couple of attempts over the years, but this year I think we're a little bit more robust. We're actually going out at a reasonable time. So you probably will all be getting in the mail a letter from us asking for your support. We have a couple of initiatives that we would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Policies is going to meet this week. Have we narrowed down a day in time?
Just waiting for Zona to check her calendar for Friday.
I have a question regarding that, but I'm going to ask it after the meeting.
Okay.
Somebody else? Motion to adjourn?
Sumut.
No move.
Second.
Definitely.
Thank you. Good job, team.